Thank you. Well, this is the City Council meeting on September 8th, 2015. If you stand with me for the Fledgled Allegiance's place.
My Fledgled Allegiance's to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic of the Free and Open States. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And if I could call upon one of the acting clerk? What title do you have? Anyway. Would you do the roll, please?
Councilmember Althoff?
Here.
Councilmember Ellison?
Here.
Councilmember Hall of Addison? Councilmember Meyer?
Here.
And Mayor Hodges?
Here.
I move that we excuse Councilmember Hall's absence this evening.
And second? And second is to excuse Councilmember Hall's absence tonight. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Thank you. Approval of the agenda? It's there for us. Any additions, corrections, changes, or anything?
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
And second? I've moved in second to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Approval of the minutes of our previous meetings? There was a regular meeting. We will have one first from August 17th. There's a corrected page. And so, page, I guess it was on the backside of two. It was corrected. So, any other errors, or omissions, or things need to be corrected?
I move that we approve the minutes of the August 17th regular meeting as presented. As amended.
And second, as amended. All right. Excellent. Thank you. All in favor of approving the amended August 17 minutes?
Yes.
Any opposed? And then we had a work session August 24th. Those some minutes. And synapses is also quoted for us.
I move that we approve the work session meeting minutes of August 24th.
And second? And moved in second to approve the minutes of the August 24th work session? All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Approval of the accounts payable? Item number five, four, I'm sorry. Any concerns about the bills?
Yeah, I have one question. On page five, I guess. Pennsylvania turnpike total for 71, 70?
I was able to get some more equipment through the 1033 program. One of the conditions was I had to go pick it up.
Okay. And could, um, I get the total expenses for that trip?
Certainly.
And then, um, didn't you purchase another motor, or not purchase, but acquire another motorcycle?
Yes.
A while back?
Yes.
So, we have three now?
That was traded to another police agency. We could not sell that because it's federal equipment.
Okay.
These that we just obtained could be sold for profit later on, after they come off the inventory.
Okay. So, all right. Okay, so are they in pretty good shape?
Yes.
Maybe you could bring in some pictures next month and...
Absolutely.
So that we can let the general public know.
Absolutely.
Know what we're doing. Well, thank you very much. And with that, I will make a motion to approve the paid list.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, I've moved in second to approve the accounts payable as presented to us. For the speaking, a roll call.
Councilmember Althoff?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall of Addison? Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
And Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Item five is citizen comments for any addicts that do not appear on the agenda. So, if any citizen would like to address the council, now would be the time to do so. Just step up to the microphone, state your name, and keep your comments to about five minutes.
My name is Kelly Bishop. I live at 328 North Jefferson Street. And I just had some questions about where we're at with the repaving North Jefferson up to Atwood.
Well, it's a time for comments, and we generally don't get into a dialogue. But next summer, summer of, we'll be passing a streets plan later in the meeting. And you may be, I'll be addressing if you're okay. And plus, you can definitely, it's for the summer of '16.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Saying none, we'll move on to old business. Strategic goals report as well as pending council tractions. Mr. How?
Um, under strategic goals, street asset management plan, a budget plan has been presented for consideration and adoption. That'll be at this meeting, it's agenda item later. Once adopted, the goal, this goal will be completed. And then, number four, waste, water, and full infiltration. Part of New Hope, that was staffed recently to go over the data that was collected. And we expect to have a report from them in the near future with a presentation to the council. So, that will be coming. And then, under pending council projects on the tower, I would add to that, on the tower, I think we're tend to be looking at a date of September 1st to have that removed. Same way, we're trying to coordinate with, um, what is that? The grain company. And they're trying to look at Monday as well, so.
What was the date?
September 21st.
Oh, okay.
September 21st.
All right.
What did I say?
September 1st.
We didn't hear the 21 part.
I'm working on it. And that's all I get for strategic goals and pending council projects.
All right.
On the, because it's old business, on the, the streets that we talked about, and then we weren't going to do because of the, we want to do the infrastructure. I just wanted to ask the question about, um, the water lines freezing in the winter time. Is that being brought into the picture so that we're, any streets where that's happening, we're addressing it? Because I know there's, it used to be quite a big list, and it got whittled down quite a bit. But, um, I've had a couple of citizens that have frozen up over the last couple of years. And the only reason it got brought up is because you brought up Suffolk Street as a replating project. And, um, there's a, there's a resident on that street that's having quite a bit of problems.
We, um, the, not last year, but the year before, when we had the major freezing problems. And actually, we've expanded the list. The list that you're talking about for ways of application is that we send out notices to homeowners who typically have freezing problems in the winter to say that you should start running your water at a trickle. And then, we will deduct that from their bill, and we sort of average their bill so that they can keep their water running, so it doesn't freeze. Two years ago, when we had the major freezing events, we ended up finding more areas where homeowners were experiencing the freezing. In fact, we were running hoses all over the place to try to get water to people. We expanded the list based on that, and sort of this last year, those homeowners received letters as well. The thing that I did was, I love this combining old technology and new technology. I took one of the maps that we had with a lot of distribution lines on it. And Teresa actually took all those addresses and marked them on a map for me. And as we're talking about these street projects, and as we're talking about these utility projects, Ron and I, and Jeff and I specifically, have had some discussions about, okay, where is this in our, um, our water system survey? Are we looking at water main upgrades in these areas or not? And so, that's becoming part of our home improvement.
That's, that's, I just wanted to ask and make sure that was put in there, because I hate to do a street, you know, when we could have fixed something.
When there's some freezing problems.
I know, I know that cost-wise, it's cheaper to run the water than it is to fix a street. You know, if it's just one or two people. But, um, it comes to a point where, you know, if it's been going on for 30, 30 or 40 years, then I think it's time to, you know.
And when we were...
Yeah. That's all right. You can interrupt me, I interrupt you.
No, I can't interrupt you. You can interrupt me. Um, when we were having the issues a couple of years ago, Bob and I talked quite good about it. And he said, a lot of these are issues with connections, they're not necessarily with the water main. And he said, there were times where he would see where they were, there was sort of a bump in the line because the contractors were too lazy to fill in the ditches before they made the connections. And so, that these areas where the service lines are a little bit higher, and sometimes those are under the sidewalks, or, you know, in places where the frost can eat down.
Yeah.
So, it's not always necessarily a water main issue. Sometimes it's really a homeowner or service issue.
Yeah. I understand that. But, um, we just need to basically identify the ones that are in the streets and under the sidewalks. And, and I know, you know, like at my house, not mine, but my next door neighbor's valve is in the middle of the sidewalk. Well, that's a, that's a hard one, you know? Because the people walking on the sidewalk are the ones that are going to drive the frost on. So, but, um, no, I know that, I know that we had a problem, problem on West Street years ago, and we took care of them because of the so many. But, I just sort of wanted to make sure that we were going in the right direction and not going backwards, so.
Yeah. And we, your point is we'll take it, and we'll, you know, we have been looking at where those freeways are occurring, and we'll continue to do that. And I'll make a note about Suffolk as well, and make sure that we're taking a look at that one.
All right. Well, you know, I might as well come up and bring this out anyways. The only reason I'm asking is they, the people that are there in that house now, they've got, they had a 40, or a $400, you know, overage on their water bill, you know, and it was because of running water. But when you're doing that, you shouldn't have to pay for sewer too, correct?
Right.
Yeah, so, I will have them stop down and talk to you about it, because, um...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Would love to talk to them.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else on old business? Move on then to item seven, new business, and Larkins Chili Cook-Off.
This is the 14-day-old chili cook-off, and Larkins is asking for a special department to close the street from, um, Sunday and Saturday on October 10th.
And Deb called me and said that she wouldn't be able to make it. And I, I think everything is going to be the same as last year, so if there's no problems with the chief, I'll make the motion that we approve this.
And second? All right. Sorry. But I thought it was very clever of Larkins to present here, um, the, it's basically the description of the anticipated participants.
Yes.
That was very clever.
Mm-hmm. How are you supposed to know?
It's a great help. Yes.
Yes, I was second, that's for sure.
All right. I've moved in second to approve the request, such as it is, from Larkins for closing down Broadway Street on October 10th. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on then to the murders delegates. And this is Michigan employment, or Michigan employee retirement system.
Unisspo.
Unisspo, okay. But, uh, why do you use murders? We use these, yeah. Anyway, it helps to explain.
Mm-hmm.
So, this is for our old folks.
So, the retirement system has an annual meeting, and there are employee delegates and employer delegates in the annual meeting. The employee delegates are selected by the employees, and Don DeYoung and Megan Kaiser have been selected by the employees. And then, the employee delegates are chosen by the city council, and we put up the names for you of Mark Howe and Greg Pierce as the alternate.
All right. Questions, concerns, or objections?
I move that we appoint Mark Howe as the employer delegate, and Greg Pierce as the employer alternate for the murders annual meeting.
Second? Okay. I've moved in second to appoint certain delegates to the, to the meeting. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Item C is the local community facilities report. Our various city facilities. Mr. How, take it away.
Thank you. I just have a brief presentation on the report, but earlier this year, you requested that we develop a city of local community facilities report. The report outlines facilities owned and operated by the city of local for the benefit of the greater community. And so, the report is completed. It's being presented to you for your information. In a nutshell, what the report does is it identifies a number of facilities that, as I said, are owned and operated by the city of local. The Englehardt Public Library, the Graham Building, which houses the historic museum, the Riverwalk Building, which houses the chamber, the Lowell Shovel and Riverwalk, community parks such as Recreation Park, Creekside Park, Stony Lakeside Park, and these, you know, all host of the youth fair, youth football alliance, here literally, a lake and a public beach at Stony Lakeside, and the North Washington property, which has the Boy Scout Canyon, and then Oakwood Cemetery. And so, we looked at these facilities, and in the report, you know, there's some background on each one of them in quite a bit more detail. Um, you know, perhaps when we required it, or there's a lease with somebody, and how long that lease is. But the, the facilities serve more than 15,000 residents of the greater local community. That's roughly the school district population. The population for the city of local is 37,85. That's what it was in the last census. For local charter township, it's 59,49. And for regents townships, it's 41,89. So, the city of local population is, is less than 30% of that total of 15,000 in terms of residents. The, ultimately, the net cost to city of local taxpayers is $300,000 during, and that's what the cost was during 2014, '15 fiscal year. That's the equivalent of about 3.39 mils. So, out of the 15 mils that city residents pay in property tax, about 3.39 is what the cost is of operating and maintaining these facilities. Again, like I said, there's, there's further detail contained in the report. It will be available on the city website. I, we will make a printed copy or email to any city resident. And if you have any questions, or if there's anything more, and I'm going to highlight in the report, I'd be happy to do that.
I can find other questions?
The one thing, and we discussed it in a meeting, just curious if we'd ever have a breakdown of which each park. And I know that's not an easy task, to get some figures on that, but it'd be nice to see kind of how each park costs the city residents. And then, my other comment would be, it'd be nice to know the information on City Hall, even though it's not the greater community, but if we add just City Hall to that, and just so that it's a complete document.
We can do that. And then, the parks, we can do as well. We're doing some tracking to try to figure out what those costs are, to divide it up by park. So, we're, that'll be work in progress.
Right. I mean, this is, this is great information to have, and it's wonderful to share it with everyone, but it'd be nice to have a little bit more detail. But this is a good start. Maybe part two, we can add the rest amount. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. Now, for the anticipated five-year streets plan.
Um, yes, we've completed the five-year street plan. It's presented through your consideration and approval. The plan is a working document. Anything to add? Um, it's a working document in the sense that it's something that we will update every single year. And I've been thinking about what the schedule might be for that. I think I may put something together for you, because ultimately, we want to have a street plan, our five-year street plan, ready to go before you start the budget process. So, we're, well, I'm asking you to adopt this for 2015 through 2019, and it includes projects that we're going to be starting on fairly soon, if you approve them later on the meeting. We, we will want to start firming up the 2016 through 2020 plan, and create in, in that process some opportunity for public comment, for dialogue, for questions. If they have a question on North Jefferson, and we've had some questions about Washington Street, and we've had some questions about some other streets. And so, we wanted to create that, that opportunity for public input and dialogue. So, I'm going to be working on the schedule for you, and I think we need to get started on the 2016, 2020 plan fairly soon. In the meantime, though, in, in developing the plan and prioritizing projects, we, we really look at the, you know, four kind of criteria, broad criteria. One is just the current surface condition and the most economic means of extending the useful life. And we've had some discussion, and I can go into some detail on it, or actually, maybe get Ron to help me out a little bit, because he's the real expert. But, it, it, when you, a street is first paved, you want to go through the process of maintaining, you want to do some crack sealing, things like that early on. And if you don't do that, then the street just will not last as long as it would if you did some of that early maintenance. So, that crack sealing and some of that stuff is included in this plan. And it's for streets that, that we've resurfaced or, or done some work on over the last five to seven years. So, that current surface condition is in good condition, and also the most economic means of replacing a street. Another, another criteria is whether the street serves community facilities such as manufacturers, businesses, churches, schools, and other public buildings or spaces such as parks. Another criteria is whether the street serves a primary residential connector to major streets or highways. And then, another one is that the current future plans provide water and/or sewer improvements, and probably line those water, sewer, those utility improvements up with the, with the street plan. Within the plan, there, there are very rough estimates. They told more than 1.5 million over the next five years. It's important that you know that those are very, very rough estimates. And once you adopt a plan, as we're looking at streets for the next year, what I will do on the estimating side is ask the city engineer to, to say, start to look at this particular street now, and give me a better estimate on this particular street. And when they do that, they'll actually go out to look at the condition of the street, they'll look at curb and gutter, they'll look at other things that need to be done. And then, we'll also have the utility folks start to pull in some information and give us sort of an estimate of what the utility work that will be required. So, keep in mind that the estimates start out very broad, and as we get closer to a project, they narrow down, they narrow down, they narrow down, until we finally have a bid, and then we know what the cost is going to be. So, that estimating process is, it's an ongoing process. In this plan, also, they, the estimates don't include curb and gutter work, that maybe need additional storm, water, drainage, any of the utility improvements. So, this is just the street. This is just the surface of the street. In looking at the plan, we, I'm going to come up to a little bit more of a discussion as we get to the next project. Or I can do it now if you'd like, but we have programmed for, we have this fall, Washington, Jefferson, Jackson, those single blocks from Main to Avery. And then, also, a project with North Grove and, and High Street. In that particular case, that was kind of like Hillside Court a few years ago, that the street was falling apart, but it just, when you have those streets on hills, they go, when they go, they go quickly. And because of the, the nature of the terrain, you really, you want to get on them right away, otherwise they're just going to wash away, and then they're in really bad shape. So, that was one that we hadn't planned on, that we added to the list this year. Looking at 2016, we originally were planning this year to do Monroe with the Jefferson, Jackson, Washington project. But as we got to looking at some of the utility work that needed to be done, and some of the things that we needed to do in terms of traffic control and that kind of stuff, we really didn't think it was the right thing to do to try to do Monroe at the same time that we did the other, those other streets. So, we're pushing that off until spring, as well as this piece of Avery right behind the city hall. Then, also in the plan is Jefferson. And, and this would be a pretty aggressive project to do Jefferson from Avery Street all the way to Fremont. It's, once we get these, some of these downtown, you know, these little blocks done, Jefferson is, it is the number one priority, and I don't think there, there would be any question about that. It's a truck route that runs through a residential neighborhood. Atwood is, their business is expanding, it's growing, there are more trucks that are running up and down Jefferson Street. I've had reports, reports of even broken windows just from the truck traffic. And so, Jefferson is, is one of those where I think we need to be aggressive, and I think we need to address it next year, and, and address the entire street. Then, looking into 2017, starting to take a look at Monroe. Monroe actually is, has more traffic on it from Atwood than Jefferson does. When we put traffic counters out, I should never should do this stuff from memory, but it seemed like Monroe was almost three times as many traffic counts as Jefferson. Now, Jefferson gets heavy trucks, but the people who work at Atwood are coming in on Monroe, and crapping on Monroe, and Monroe is a very, very, very busy street. There's some portions of it that, you know, are in pretty bad shape. There are some portions of it that maybe aren't as bad. And so, what we're looking at on Monroe is to do part of it in 2017, and then part of it in 2018. Another one on the 2017 project list would be North Broadway from Main to Chatham. That's basically the street in front of the post office. Gets a lot of traffic, it's right downtown, has a lot of patches on it right now, and so that's one that we're looking at in 2017. And then, also, aside from the crack sealing, there's Grindle Drive. Grindle was done, portions of it have been done over the years, but there's still a section of it that needs to be done. There's some, there's some drainage work that needs to be completed on Grindle as well. And one of the things we've been doing the last couple of years is like simply, you know, we had pieces of it done, but it was never fully completed, and so, we're going back and trying to complete it. That's really the case with Grindle, is that it, it, it's a street that needs to be completed, and so, we can cross that one off our list. It also serves as a pretty major connector for residential to ultimately get back up to 21. 2018, that would be Suffolk and Howard, serves the schools, and buses are traveling up and down Suffolk and Howard. All the school traffic is running up and down Suffolk and Howard. So, we would be looking at that for 2018. And then, 2019 would be South Valley Vista Drive. That's the, would be the connector between N21 and Bowles Road. The north portion of Valley Vista, that, that serves that whole Valley Vista neighborhood, isn't, isn't horrible. We, at some point in time, I may come back and add that as a, like a chip seal or something like that. You know, I would have worked in question some of those long-term things out, but that southern portion of it really is a, is a, is a business connector, and it's used quite a bit for people that are either going to those businesses like Bowles Road coming or going, or the parks, or, you know, what have you. And then, for crush and shape, Avery and James, we've got those down as, as crush and shapes. I'm sorry. James and Clark. No. James, and then for chip seal, Center and Clark. Just read it, don't... So, that in a nutshell is, is the plan moving forward. And like I said, this is a work... And like I said, this is a working document, and so ideally, we would be, you would be adopting this in the beginning of the year as we're working on a budget. And then that gives us the opportunity to know that, okay, these are the, these are the streets that we're going to start shooting for, and then we'll start recording in our estimates, we'll start putting together the bid documents, look at the engineers going on it. So if you adopt this tonight, for example, I, the next phone call I'm going to make, Monroe and Avery for 2016 are, are pretty close to being designed, and we're pretty close to being able to put that up for a bid. But I'll get them moving on Jefferson, and have the engineer start taking a look at Jefferson, maybe get some of the survey work done, the survey work needs to be done, and getting us a better estimate for what the cost of that street is going to be. And also looking at utilities and utility crews.
And again, for clarification, these years listed are for during those calendar years.
It's a calendar year.
Our budget makes things a little goofy because it starts July 1st and ends on June 30th. Don't worry about that, we'll worry about the budget and where those things fall. This list, the list upon approval, would be our plan during those calendar years. And that makes a little, I think, a little easier than dividing the year up on July 1st, so. Clarification.
Correct.
Another comment, I mean, if you look at the dollars spent, it's a pretty aggressive plan on streets. We talked about, I just was asking you about funding and how we're going to budget this, but I think people need to be reminded how many miles of streets we have, and what percentage of them are poorer condition, and how many dollars it's going to cost to fix them all. I mean, it's just mind-boggling when you know the statistics on it. So I think this is a fair, but aggressive. It's not like we're not fixing the roads, but it's such an expensive endeavor that you've got to plan it out. You can't just do them all at once. And I think somehow we need to convey that so everyone understands that this is a five-year plan. It goes on from there, it never ends. And I know there has not been a lot of streets done in the past. Years, years ago, we're trying to, you know, get back on that street bandwagon and fix everything that we possibly can. But I think this is a pretty fair, aggressive, and I think, you know, it's going to require a lot of juggling to get the budget to do it, but I think it's a good plan. What we do, I think it's well thought out.
Maybe to give you those figures too, there are roughly 20 miles of city streets. And if you think about it, if a street's going to last 30 years, I forgive more than 30 years, but if a street's going to last 30 years, you want to be, you want to be redoing about two-thirds of a mile of streets every year. This hits about, can I say hits, I'm going to explain that, but it hits over a mile of street every year, averages more than a mile. But part of that is just maintenance. So it's not redoing portions of, you know, a mile of streets. So that's, crack sealing is included in that.
But that maintenance is so important because it extends the life until we can get after a major repair or something else that's needed. If you do nothing to them, they crumble so much faster, there's no way you could ever keep up with that.
Yeah. And, and you know what's not included in this is, we have a budget for streets, and within that budget is, is capital, which is what we would set aside for the street plan. Then you have maintenance and traffic and winter maintenance. And maintenance is pop over here. Traffic is going to be signs and things like that that need to be fixed. And then winter maintenance is obviously snowplow. You never know, you know, what a winter is going to be like, and we, we typically, we don't budget for the total worst-case scenario, but you'll recall a couple of years ago when we had the worst-case scenario, we really didn't, we didn't go over budget by that much. And so we've been careful to not, because we have a good year in winter maintenance, back our winter maintenance budget off. I tend to take the approach that let's, let's plan for next to the worst-case scenario. And if we have a better year, then that's a year we can take that savings and put into, you know, a little bit more on the maintenance side of things. And we've done that this year. If you go out Riverside, and I really give Scott Ossler a lot of credit, he took some folks out on Riverside, and they did big patches of hot asphalt and hot mix. And that's going to get us, you know, a few more years. That's going to get us pretty far. It levels the street out, but it also takes care of those areas where water can get in and the form ice, and, you know, the street would fall apart in a couple of years. So that's in the budget as well, it's not necessarily in this plan, but those little things like that, there's some areas, Dennis Cannon's brought up some areas in Valley Vista where if you just, you hit the intersections, because the intersection is where, because a wheel is turning, it's where you get that wear and tear on the street, on residential street. You can just hit those intersections with some hot mix. So we'll continue to do those kinds of things, depending on the winters that we have. We will continue to do those types of things as well as these larger projects.
Couple of questions, I guess. And some of this repair area, I'm not an erosion engineer by any means. My cousin is, he builds overpasses for him. Ron's got a lot of experience in all this as well. Is there going to be substrate repair as well? Especially because if you do Monroe and Jefferson up to Avery, you better go across these with all that equipment to repair the ones further up, the year after, and the year after, and after. You're going to ruin the road you just did to fix the road to make some guy on that one block happy. Does all substrate will be repaired as well, or heavy equipment, or? I don't know how all that works though, so.
Right. We are evaluating the substrate, the grade substrate also as we're, as we're planning these streets. As we talked about before, we've done borings along the streets just to make sure that we have sufficient gravel, sand, gravel, the surface of the road to be able to support the wheel loads that you're talking about. So we want to make sure that we're doing the right fix at the right time, doing exactly what you're talking about.
By the way, depending, we're working backwards from what you should be doing here. We're starting further out, come this way rather than this way, you go that way.
Right.
Take your thing. And you already talked about the truck routes that are affected and all that. And listed in here are some of the streets that are going to need utility upgrades, and you won't know until you get into there, obviously. But it need up there, total replacement or whatever. We already touched on that a little bit. And I guess that was the only comments I had on it.
No, it's a good doing something. We haven't done anything for years, you know, at this magnitude, and it's, and it's good. I wish we could do more.
I move that we adopt the five-year street plan for 2015 through 2019 as presented.
Is there a second of motion?
I would support it.
And moved in second to adopt the street plan for 2015 through 2019. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
And if I may, before you get too far off that, I just want to make sure Mr. Bush, if your questions on Jefferson were organized.
And now that the street plan has been approved, it will be online?
Yes.
I'll get your copy. Okay. Moving on, item E, Washington, Jefferson, Jackson Street projects, specific.
We, as I mentioned before, we were planning this year on doing the blocks between Main and Avery of Monroe and Washington, Jefferson, Jackson, and then doing all of Avery. As we got into looking at it, and we had some initial estimates, and then as we got into looking at it, we looked at utilities and discovered that there were some issues with utilities at Washington and, I'm sorry, at Jefferson and Avery, and then some utility work on Jackson as well. And then as we got further along, discovered that there's some pretty major utility work that will need to be done on Monroe too. And then the other thing that came up that will be the next project is, as I mentioned, Grove, North Grove and High Street. And as that street was washing away, we took another look at Avery and said, you know, these couple of sections of Avery, maybe we come back to it in a few years, but certainly not as bad as North Grove, and so maybe we take those two. And those sections I'm talking about are Washington and Jefferson, Jefferson and Jackson. And maybe, maybe we can do some patching on that if we're done Riverside, or do something else, and not totally tear that street up right now. So we went ahead and designed the entire project, but then, and put it up for a bid, and then issued an addendum to take the Monroe and this one block of Avery between Monroe and Washington out of it. And so what you have before you are the Washington, Jefferson, Jackson Streets project. This includes not only the street work, but it includes the utility work. The utility work is about 80,000 or so of this total, and the rest of it is street repaired. As we actually get down to the work itself, Dave Austin, city engineer, will be dividing that up a little more succinctly for us as we actually get the bills and pay the bills, so he'll be sorting that out for us. And so I'm going to also, this may be accounting stuff that you're not concerned about, but I'll give you some of the minutia. We've got some major and local streets in here, and we also have DEA funding for this project, but only a proportion of it is in the DEA. So we've got a lot of work to do to try to figure out the accounting proportion of what pays for what part of the project. So anyway, just to share that minutia with you, as staff, we've got a lot of accounting to do. But in the meantime, we have bids. We're recommending that you approve a bid from CL Trucking and Excavating for $236,696. C and L has completed several successful projects for the city of Orleans, so we've been very happy with their work. Most recent was the street utility work in North Center in Heffron in 2011.
That's it.
Are they local, in the local area, or I can't remember?
They're based on my own.
Oh, okay.
Chandler Street. The CL.
I move that we accept the bid from CL Truck and Excavating for the Washington, Jefferson, Jackson Streets project for $236,696.
Is there a second of motion? No second. You have been moved in second to support this recommendation to do the streets. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to item F, Grove and High Streets.
And I've mentioned this before, but this is the, the street on the hill, but the two streets on the hill that are, are Washington. And so at the same time, we also got a bid for Crush and Shape. And Crush and Shape is basically a milky asphalt, put it back down as a base, and then, and then lay new asphalt on top of it. There's some drainage, storm drainage work involved in this as well. And, you know, again, CL Trucking was the little bid at $68,059, and we're recommending that you approve that bid.
I move that we approve the bid from CL Trucking for Grove High Street project at the amount of $68,059.
Now, a second.
I've moved in second to support the recommendation for Grove and High Streets. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Item G, equipment purchases.
We're already moving forward with the equipment purchases, partially based on our plan for the current fiscal year. There's a memo that interim director of local tram was putting together for you, which basically says that we had planned on purchasing a new plow truck this year as well as replacing a pickup truck, and then putting an underbody scraper under a new plow truck. What we found out is that the area vendors are extremely busy, and that orders for a plow truck that would be placed right now would be another year before we would see them. And so from a financial perspective, we're thinking of pushing that off until next year. We still want to move ahead, and we'll have a little bit more discussion later on, not in this meeting, but at a future meeting, about moving forward with an order for a plow truck. But from a financial perspective, staff got together and talked about what the new tour this year, and they're recommending that we buy a sidewing blade for one of our current trucks. And then we go ahead and replace the new pickup truck, and then buy a new underbody scraper for one of our current trucks. We've started reworking the plan based on that, and also based on the cost of new plow trucks, which is, as you can imagine, as everybody's buying them, now the cost of plow trucks is going up. And so we're revising that as well, revising this equipment replacement plan. We'll have further discussion with you about that. But for this year, we think we can at least purchase this equipment, and that'll set us up at least for some plowing, we can get the pickup truck replaced.
All right. Any questions? For Ron or for Mark?
You're down the road anyway, thinking of giving a, all the tracks now this year.
Yeah.
On the edge or just get a few miles on it, increase the maintenance costs?
There's, there's one that is very, very old, and it's kind of like firecracks. What, what we want to do is get ourselves in rotation where we're replacing one every so many years, so we don't get in a situation where we have one that just is not going to be usable. Typically, Ron has been here for a while, and he probably knows the schedule. They'll, they'll send two trucks out, and then we have the third one for backup. We have, I think typically, there's something two trucks out.
I move that we authorize the purchase of the sidewing blade, the pickup truck, and the upper body scraper.
The underbody scraper.
Underbody, whoops. Whatever it is. It's inspired. Yes, they're putting it out together.
Well, nonetheless, we do have a second, thank you, Matt. So we've been seconded to authorize the purchase of, through MDL pricing, anyway, all those.
And if I may, just to address the my deal issue. My deal is the state bid, basically, and so the state has already gone through a bidding process. There's pricing in place. We, what we plan to do, and we've done this in the past, is either purchase from that vendor, or there are times like with the pickup truck where if we have my deal pricing, we will go to a local vendor and say, can you meet the my deal price? And if the local vendor can meet the my deal price, then we'll just buy it from the local vendor. But if they can't, then we'll buy it from whoever won the my deal bid. But that at least meets the requirements that you have in policy and bid process, because the state has already gone through that. And actually, gotten a better price than we probably would have gotten on our own. So just want to explain the my deal and what we anticipate doing. That's why I specifically said using my deal pricing.
Thanks for the clarification. So we have a motion in second to accept this recommended motion. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to item H, the wall cable TV distribution. And Mr. Allen, you want to lead the way here with this?
Sure. And at the request earlier this year of the LCTV Fund Advisory Committee, you committed to giving them prior notice of the amount that will be available for distribution. They'll typically run their grant process at the end of the year and the beginning of next year. And so you've committed to them to let them know how much would be available for, for that process. This year, I'm recommending that you make all the spendable balance in the fund available to the committee so that you can receive their recommendations for the current fiscal year.
All right. Thank you. Any discussion? Add to that?
We had quite a discussion at the work session, that was, and we didn't really come to any point. Well, let's do this, let's. That was, and we didn't really come to any, like, well, let's do this, let's do that. So I think the recommendation is to let the process go as, as it always has, without interrupting or saying we're taking the money for streets. That doesn't mean we wouldn't ask for money for streets, but the process would still be in place.
I think the concern here, well, like the real issue is we've got seven great people that are advising us on how those funds would be distributed and they'll be reviewing all of the, so let the, let the process follow its flow, so. Is that a motion?
Yes. I, I move that we just let the LCTV Fund make recommendations for this year.
Your second. Okay. Thank you. I've been seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor? Yes. Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to item I, WTP valve replacement.
It's water treatment plant, replacement of the valve, backwash valve. And Ron and Brian went out and got quotes for the replacement of the valve, quotes are from Gala, Outbuyer?
Outbuyer.
Outbuyer and Harper. That one's easy to pronounce. And there's, there's a memo attached, but, and Ron can go into detail if you'd like, but basically there are some concerns about the valve that was quoted from Gala and Outbuyer is somebody that I don't know if we've worked with, but I know Ron's, Tom's familiar with them and is familiar with Harper. And so we're recommending your approval of the quote from Outbuyer at $7,065. The quote from Gala was at $62,78. I'm kind of hoping you go along with that because of the, sort of the emergency, borderline emergency need to get this valve replaced. I told staff last week to go ahead and call Outbuyer and get the valve order so that something can get here. The issue is that if the, as they have problems with the valve, we could risk pulling out the filters that we just replaced a couple of years ago. And so we really want to get moving and get that valve replaced. So I, I took the leap of faith and told them to go ahead and get the part orders so we could get them replaced as soon as possible. But it was not a budgeted item. You can't plan for self, we did. We do need your approval for it.
The difference between the high and the middle bid was $787, which is a huge amount and sometimes it's more comforting in my experience going with somebody you know and somebody you don't know so much about. And if you've got some personal relationships going there, sometimes people respond much better to their friends than otherwise. But anyway, $787 is the difference and I don't see that as being a real problem in my heart, so thank you for doing all of that work.
I move that we approve the quote from Outbuyer.
I'll second.
I've moved and seconded to approve the recommended motion of going with Outbuyer for the valve replacement. All in favor? Yes. Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to item eight, council comments. And Mr. Mayor, you're on.
I thought everybody hasn't met yet. Not this week, I mean next week, Monday at 3:30 at the Fire Barn. We'll see you there Monday. All right. Easy. Thank you then. Mr. Alton.
Now my boards have met. We had a pretty busy weekend in town. Some nice fireworks. And I hope to see everybody who's probably in front of me. And that's all I have for tonight.
This is awesome.
My boards are yet to meet this month and just wanted to comment, first day of school and just like you would think it would. So we're up and running at the school as well. Yeah, we all have our pink arrow shirts, so we're all supporting this wonderful, wonderful charity that we have in our community and hope to see you out at some of the events and nothing else, at least by your pink shirt.
Support it, yes.
Support and.
Thank you. The Lowell Lake of Power will meet this Thursday, so a little premature for that, but the Chamber of Commerce did meet this morning and had a nice discussion about downtown summertime merchants and that business was better this summer than has been many summers previous. So things are looking up for merchants in downtown. There was also discussion about their annual meeting, which this year was moved to May. We're going to go, they're looking, moving back to February at the Grand Volute, February 25th. And so they also discussed the various options for awards to various businesses within our community. And that's also when we recognize the Person of the Year, but that's out of their hands. That's voted by the previous five Persons of the Year. So a nice discussion with a small group being Tuesday and after the Labor Day thing, I'm sure many kind of forgot and, but it, it was a good discussion amongst good people. And then the local memorial fund that will be here in fall. So that's all that I have there. But we do have, again, for our council, it's remember September 29th, I believe that's Tuesday for our get together with Peter Lexman and good discussion, but I think that our friends from the townships and boards and commissions are also being invited into public conduct business during your various boards, commission and city council meetings. So process. And the newsletter was in our bills this month. Great newsletter again. We thank our writer, Susan Maxwell Stevens. Yes. Thank you. Senior hog, but I'm entitled. And so thank you to Susan for her great writing and getting information out to our citizens that help tell the story of the city and how we do things. So that's all I have. Mr. How, you're on with your manager's request.
Thank you. The temporary parking lot off South Monroe has been completed. We removed this in a block building, created the base, installed asphalt millings. Really a special thanks to the public group, Works Group, for making that a priority and getting the job done. I think there, I, I struggle with, should I mention people or not mention people? But I think I'd like to mention people and take the risk of leaving somebody out. But Joe, I think Joe Baker and Todd Phillips really were the primary to work on that. So really thanks to Joe and Todd for that work. The, just to add to that, Main Street Barbecue has soft opening tonight and they still look like they're on schedule to open on Thursday. In the meantime, we presented to the DDA a design for the parking lot to go up behind there and we are working on getting a sign put up back there, basically coming soon. And here's a picture of the parking lot that's coming to go back there so that people who are back there know that it's going to be a permanent lot at, probably next spring. We didn't have a schedule with other streets sweeping and we got them in and they completed that last week and moving forward, I think we're going to need to continue to budget for at least four sweepings in the year. We spent a lot of time during the past few weeks, actually Steve Treger Sewell and more than me, but finalizing financial reports and incorporation for the auditors. The auditors were here last week and everything seems to be looking pretty good and you'll have a report from them in another month or so. The consults are rolling forward with final recommendations on downtown parking analysis. I know that was put on hold for a little bit, but we did put a phone call into them and said, let's, let's get back on that and let's get your recommendations so we can get that parking analysis completed. So we have, hope to have a final report from them this fall. And then you mentioned the special board commission workshop for September 29th at 6:00 PM. We, we had over the course of the last year, some inquiries from some of the boards and commissions to, you know, questions about parliamentary procedure or open meetings or can we do this, can we do that? And thought that it would be good to just set up a special workshop for, for you, but also for them to go over some of those basics. We also invited the townships to participate if they'd like. The workshop will be in this room and you know, basically going, like I said, over open meetings, that parliamentary procedure, basic public meeting topics. You know, I think it's important for people to know that city, the city government has a lot of city residents involved in the process. And you know, you have a number of boards and commissions, you have Parks and Recreation, you have Plan Commission, you have Harbor Board, you have Historic District, you have Downtown Vote Authority, you, you know, there are just a number of them. And there's, I think close, I haven't counted them yet, but I think close to 40 people, 40 city residents that are involved in providing public input. That public input then works its way to the council and works its way into priorities that you ultimately set in a strategic plan. It also creates a number of opportunities for people to come in and be a part of city government. There are your two council meetings, you have a workshop, you have a coffee with council, but on top of that, there's the monthly parks meeting, there's the monthly DDA meeting, there's the monthly planning commission meeting. So there are many, many opportunities for the public to engage with, with us and we encourage them to do that. We encourage them to do that through, through those boards and commissions and through the city staff and through the city council. So yeah, we're having that workshop and give the, pointing the boards and commissions maybe some tips on how they can make sure they comply with the Open Meetings Act as they run their meetings, but also be sure to, to encourage significant engagement. The final thing I have for you that's, that's not in my written report is that I got a call from the Fire Authority today. They've been looking at repairing the parking lot at the, at the fire station. And there was some discussion about, well, a portion of that really is, you know, used by the city, it really should be a city responsibility. And I said, yeah, you know, that makes some sense. I mean, you know, the area used by the ambulance or by the, you know, DPW as we're going in and out of our garage. And so they went ahead and measured it up and I think they figured it's about a 50/50 split. And then they went out and got bids for some cracked ceilings and some patching. And the phone call I got today was the, the total, the lowest bid is 5,600, so we had to come up with about 2,800 of that. And I told them today, I thought we'd be able to do that. So just wanted you to know that I went ahead and committed to that. I'm pretty sure that we set aside enough money for the air packs and there'll be some savings there because of the grant and so we'll cover it out at savings because of the grant. And that's all I have.
All right. Any answering questions here? Any questions?
No.
All right. Thank you. All of our boards and questions at this time are full, which is a good thing. So with that.
I move that we adjourn at 8:03.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor? Yes. Any opposed? Thank you very much.